Uh, let's go ahead and start. Um, hopefully everyone got the few. I think I sent two um samples to look at in terms of the MOUs. Um, I did not hear back from the other town, which I believe was Suffield was gonna send me a copy. Um, I reminded her and she said she would get it to me. I haven't seen it. So unfortunately, we just have those two, but um, so if anyone had any thoughts on what they saw? I know the last time we left off, we thought we would just review those and um, we also talked a bit about, you know, taking a look at those in the context of what we currently do here? And maybe um, you know, having a little bit of discussion around how, how if anything, you know, what what they're, what people are doing differently than what we are currently doing here on a more informal basis.
Are we gonna uh, wanna go through those in detail then? Or some, some level of detail to get an understanding of? Cause there are two slightly different approaches. The uh, the one from uh, let's see, Mansfield was very broad. Right? It included uh, BOE and a regional school district. And uh, also they had a very small IT group between everything. Where the one from Enfield, and Enfield didn't complete our survey, did they?
They did not. No, they never got the actual um, yeah.
Okay, so um, yeah, they, they did a, a real consolidation of IT. And uh, set up a CTO as the head of IT. And that CTO then reported back, I believe, to the town manager and uh, superintendent of schools. So it was two different approaches. Um, neither one fit us exactly in terms of what we are currently doing anyway. And uh, I don't know, I kinda looked at it and uh, they're both old in that they've been in place since two thousand and sixteen or so. Uh, and I only mean that they're old in that there might have been lots of updates and things learned in the interim. And I don't know if you heard any of those conversation with these folks? Whether or not uh, they had experience now and they they hated what they had done or loved what they had done? But there didn't seem to be any new revisions to that. So they're at least several years old.
Bill, on that, on that behalf, on both of them, they were pretty much, you know, content with where their positions were.
Okay.
And what they were doing. Um, so I think that was, you know, obviously in their favor.
Yeah.
That they uh, kept it going. I don't think there was any discussion or any input on their part that they were thinking about to um, update, renew, um, redesign the agreement. It was pretty much in place and uh, they were just continuing on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think those two in particular um, had positive things to say about their arrangements. And again, I know we talked last time about one of the biggest pieces of feedback was really that you know, the challenges come and kind of reporting, having that dual reporting where you're reporting to both uh, you know, the school superintendent as well as the town manager. Um, and just the importance of having cooperation and, you know, the enthusiasm to work together. Um, it's really, it was more of that kind of like qualitative feedback, I guess, as opposed to, you know, anything concrete that they, they would suggest. Um, for them, it really came down to having that level of coordination and cooperation between both sides with these arrangements.
Yeah, and I, and I think we're at least one step ahead there in that we already have pretty significant cooperation, at least from an IT standpoint, from uh, both of our IT groups.
Yeah.
So um, yeah, I'm kinda looking at it, uh, there, there did seem to be um, some things that I would have assumed to be a challenge over time. When I looked at Enfield, Enfield talks about charging back the cost. And uh, not too sure whether or not when you go from an organization that has town IT and uh, school IT, where the costs tend to be separated. I don't know if you're doing any chargeback today?
Um, we do um, on the town side, our two IT folks, half of their salaries are um, supported by the Board of Education because uh, Rick and Brett both um, provide help desk services to the um, Board of Ed staff that's in this building. Uh, so the central administration um, upstairs is, is what our IT department supports. Um, so they, so yes, there is an arrangement there.
It was easiest for me to, to grasp what was going on in Enfield rather than the one that was, you know, the overview of what was going on in Mansfield. Because Enfield included quite a bit that went outside of IT. It's uh, I think it was like employee benefits and um, finance, financial platform as well as uh, there was one other thing.
Well, the, the Mansfield agreement was for certainly more than IT. It had entities outside of the town. Um, I mean, I don't know that we're in that situation or contemplating doing that, but I guess if you were gonna go to regionalization, which there was a big kick on for a while, um, that Mansfield agreement is kinda sort of a, a starting framework for what you're gonna need if you're gonna go that route.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, when I went through it, it was a pretty easygoing, straightforward framework. I think from the standpoint of Enfield, a couple of things I liked. They did have a committee that was drawn from both the town of Bor- and Board of Ed that oversaw the technology piece. They did have a five-year plan that was consistently updated. So I'm not sure, you know, what the long-range planning is across the town and, and the Board of Ed from that perspective. So I think there were a couple of things that whether we do formally or informally are certainly well worth uh, giving some consideration to, particularly in the long-range planning aspect.
And Paul, did you get a flavor for who was on that committee? The only two names that I saw were that of the head of the town and the, the head of the school.
When we spoke with them, um,
They have, well, it's a little, it was the town manager, school superintendent, the town finance director.
Right.
The deputy superintendent. I mean, it was a, a mix. The chief technology officer, I guess, was ex officio, but didn't have a vote.
Yeah.
Um,
Alright.
So it, I, I mean, basically the agreement kind of enforced everybody getting along.
Yeah.
Because, well, when you look at the terms of what it would take to uh, terminate the agreement.
Yeah.
Somebody was gonna pay big time, whether it was the town or the Board of Ed, whoever wanted out. I mean, there was some significant, I mean, it was kind of the, you're gonna do this or else type of, of an agreement, the way it was drawn up. It was, I thought it was pretty uh, ingenious in some respects. When you got down to it, but um, I don't know, Rick, from a five-year planning perspective, I, I, you know, you, you guys do that on a formal basis? Is it reviewed?
It's actually, it's a, it's an informal basis. Um, and pretty much where we get those is when we see something pretty much coming end of life uh, for us, which is usually five to seven years of the old school. Um, we would kick that into a capital improvement project, very similar to um, what we did with the network storage. And when that comes up, that's vetted through uh, a couple of things. One, the steering committee gets an announcement of it that we did that, that we're going forward with that. And if there was any, any objection on that part, on that committee, and then it's forwarded to you guys uh, to assist in that, in that solution. And then the money gets put into a capital improvement project, which goes out, I think, um, it, I've never went out five years. Um, I think the farthest we ever went out for projects like that is three years. Um, and that's, that's for the big ticketed items that we have.
Yeah.
Uh, because our, our operating expense in IT, that contains some funding for hardware turnover, uh, things like that. Um, so like, two years ago maybe, um, or last year. Um, a perfect example of the same thing, we don't go out really five years, we go pretty much three years. Um, that we're moving to office to um, office nineteen. Uh, so that money comes up next year and we'll make that jump at that point. So in our budget process, we think about from an IT standpoint, uh, what's coming down the road um, that we're gonna need. Uh, and I believe in two years' time, unless I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I think the whole network security piece is coming up that we have. So that comes up in like two years.
Yeah, our um, our capital plan is six years, so um, just in general.
Alright, well, are there IT components in the capital plan?
Yes, so anything that we would be planning for on the IT side would show up um, in that plan. And, and Rick and I have talked about, you know, some of the smaller capital needs. So, you know, desktops, laptops, things like that, um, printers, copiers. We've talked about, you know, how can we start to plan, you know, for the regular replacement of those, those types of items. Um, so it's definitely something we're working on.
Yeah, I was also gonna suggest that five years is too long to look at a review. So the three-year idea is good.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, we, good, sorry.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I think three years is the normal, or has been up until now, you know, kind of the accepted life cycle of, of most IT assets. Maybe with the exception of software. Um,
Right.
But it doesn't hurt to go beyond that. You know, if we're, you know, looking to improve or upgrade. So, I mean, um, I don't know, I don't know if, in the case of the IT side here, whether or not we have we're in the same boat. But I know in the fire district, I mean, they do have a five-year plan and that includes, and there are now there's some seriously hefty big ticket items when you're talking about apparatus, so. And that plan probably goes out twenty to twenty-five years.
Well, I think a, a plan is different than reviewing.
Well, but you should be, so when I look at Enfield, they have a plan that goes out five years. They update that plan every year. That's part of that steering committee's job.
Okay.
Is to keep that, if you go through and read it, think about what's going on there. So the concept to me seems to be not a bad one um, in and of itself. I guess the question is, is, you know, is there any pushback from the Board of Finance? Cause they're the guys who have to provide funding for this. And granted, when you're going out five years, that number gets squishy. Um, because who knows what things are gonna cost in five years' time? In theory, it may, should be less, but I don't know that technology costs are going down as rapidly as they were five to ten years ago. You know, I think the whole technology cycle is slowing down to some degree. So I don't know that I I'm looking for a little longer life cycle. Like, I mean, I know like on my own personal stuff, I don't, I haven't replaced a laptop in seven years. Which is, which is, I, Rick is laughing, alright, yeah, I know, I'm getting old. Um, but there was a point in time where, you know, one to two years, you were, you were pretty much done, you know?
Yeah, I mean, um, for us, like I said, it's, it's almost like, I mean, we're, we're at a size where we can actually predict it yearly what's gonna happen. Um, we don't flip our whole um, desktop base in one year. It's more like what funding I have available and what are the issues that the departments have. Um, pretty much like soon, within the next month, um, I'll send out an email. They just say, okay, I need this, that, or whatever. And if it's supported, we'll, we'll pick it up this year. Uh, if not, then we wait till June first and then we pick it up that year. So those type of things are in our budget already. Um, I mean, so it's not like we're on the school district. He's, you know, when Jason does that, he actually has to forecast that he's probably gonna, and I'm not a hundred percent positive, but if he's flipping his hardware base or his virtualization, he's flipping like twenty-five percent or less a year for five years, something like that. That's where that plan would come in for him. Um, what I did, and it was a discussion that um, Bill and I had at the end of our last meeting of what are, some of the similarities and differences that on both of those MOUs and what we do here in, in, in Simsbury. Um, so if we have a couple of minutes, I'd just like to go over that really roughly and go, go through it. Uh, good, bad, and different. Um, um, the first one, and I think, does everyone have a copy of uh, the agreements?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that first one, I'm looking at Enfield's right now. Um, and I'm going through the background standards, foundation procedures, and what do you really list there as a catch-all? And reading through those first two, um, the difference is here is that in Simsbury, we have two help desks, they have one. Uh, the infrastructure is the same for what they do, sharing there and we share here. Uh, the network storage solution is a little bit different. Our demands on our storage solution is, as we found out with um, Simplicity, is that we need a little bit more robust on backups and redundancy and restores, uh, which plague us almost every other day, uh, to do that. So our network storage solution is different, uh, than the districts. Our platform on software-wise, we're pretty much the same, or I should say we are the same, we use VMware. Uh, there was a point a couple of years ago where we were gonna go Citrix base, but we stayed with VMware because of uh, the district-owned VMware. So I mean, that's a, a catch-all there. Um, what I saw in the Enfield piece. Um, and then what caught my eye on page two were some of the standards there, the hardware, the software. Um, I can't see how they would just formalize their policies on one set of hardware platforms. Where here in Simsbury, we're pretty much HP and Dell, um, top two. Um, software-wise, up until the last split, uh, with mail, uh, we're pretty much a Microsoft shop. Um, but that's a little bit different. Um, the software piece was transcends into the whole, it comes out more in the Mansfield setup, is where whatever the priorities are for those departments, um, and their software base is totally diverse. Uh, very similar to what we are here. Um, so I call that pretty much the same. That's how we operate. Uh, the telecommunication piece, I'm reading that as telephony. Uh, that piece is totally split up right now, where the town has its own uh, PRI lines and a on-prem hybrid VoIP digital phone system. Uh, where the school district is pretty much a pocket of uh, telephony uh, offices, uh, which I think they have money coming up in that in the next couple of years about to unify that piece of it. So there, we're different in telecommunications. In data management, we're very similar. Uh, network security, we're the same. We've been sharing that and we still share a piece of network security till this day. Um, and that's not gonna go away. I've had some discussions with uh, with the director and there's nothing gonna change on that. And that's a big sharing piece right there, uh, that we keep. Um, email, um, the unfortunate change of them going to uh, Google and us staying with Microsoft, that is a difference now. That used to be, you know, a unified event or a unified service that we've had for years. And the internet's pretty much the same. Uh, we're jumping on uh, CEN state uh, backbone and they are too. Uh, the only difference there, again, it, it's the differences of, of these two MOUs we have in front of us is that, well, they're educational and we're government. So we can't really, if they're using E-rated, we can't jump on them to support that. Um, and that was one of the initiatives that we had, which came out to really the town's advantage and the library's advantage where uh, the library, because they are E-rated funding, and Harold, you'll notice, is that we were able to piggyback their internet services onto the district services um, without a cost. The only cost it was just some engineering on our side to allow that traffic to happen. Uh, but that was a savings that through using the same provider, um, they were able to save funding.
Yeah.
Um, on page three of that memorandum, this still Enfield, is the CTO involvement with the ITPC. That piece of it, we have that, but it's, it's not called that. Uh, that's that steering committee that we have here. Um, and we briefly touched upon it last meeting, uh, where it's Melissa and I. Um, and on the district side, it would be uh, the director as well as the business manager. Um, and Melissa and I had a, actually had a discussion on it today, is to really bring that back. Uh, there has been some um, personnel changes there, so we're just trying to get that back on. But that's a piece that exists and that's where, you know, something's really, really amiss or totally um, different, that's where it comes out in that meeting.
Yeah, and I think the only difference there um, would be, you know, do we make that more formal, that group, um, in terms of the governance and working on some of these items? You know, we've been doing it just sort of um, not on our own, but we've been, it's sort of been self-driven as opposed to um, you know, being charged by the town manager and superintendent with any specific tasks. It's really been us trying to work together and collaborate um, at our level. And just something to think about, do we make that a more formal group, um, you know, with deliverables and things like that? So just something to think about.
It wouldn't hurt to have a little structure, at least written up, not necessarily that it has to be adhered to, you know, letter by letter, but at least you have a framework to, to go by if changes occur. You have a, a frame to go in.
Yep, exactly.
I agree.
Sorry, Rick, you were on a roll.
No, no, no. And then, and then the other thing was, um, it was like Har- Harold brought it up, or I think it was Paul, um, the, the five-year plan, and we talked about that at length in our meetings and we pretty much, in a, we're in a three-year, really, uh, but that's an informal basis and that, you know, that's something that's been on the table to, you know, formalize and make it a little bit more formal to document that. And um, I think maybe this year, Melissa, we could do that with the budget coming up, jacked out in three years and add together. We do have a framework for the three years.
Yeah.
And then for the, in that last piece, uh, it was the uh, funding and technology at the bottom of page three that he has there. Um, how it works now is we have a need for capital improvements or and/or uh, an increase in our operating expense. The way uh, the town manager o- office wants it is, is pretty much that it has to be discussed, uh, what the increases are. And then these meetings, these budget meetings, it's pretty much Melissa, um, the town manager and the finance director and myself, and we go over those expenses and whether they're accepted or not. And then they get put into either a capital improvement project, which is a long-term, or CNR, um, which is uh, capital non-recurring accounts, which is short-term. Pretty, usually it's the next previous year. Um, so that's how that funding gets allocated. Um, keep in mind that in the CIP, in the capital improvement plan, uh, even though we project out, say we projected something out for year five to go out that far, and it comes up, it's not a given that that money's gonna be available due to, you know, the budget requirements and the climate at that time. Um, so it's a really, it's a battle, it's a mano-a-mano battle with departments. When somebody else has a project at the same time, it's really, okay, what is really needed and what's the most important? So it is a department head battle at that point. It's not a given that that money's gonna be appropriated. Melissa, anything you wanna add on that, on the CIP um, plan, how they do that?
No, I think the only thing I would add, just so we're on the same page in terms of how it works, is we've got um, we've got the CIP, which is, you know, for the big-ticket capital items, which is um, basically anything two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or more. And then the CNR plan is for anything less than between ten thousand and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that's really the one, that's the six-year plan. And we've really been working on trying to fine-tune that across um, departments. So that's really trying to get departments to think as specifically as they can in terms of um, any equipment needs, anything that falls within that, that range. Um, to really just get it on paper so that we're planning and so that we understand how much money we need each year for these items. Um, that are more, um, you know, smaller, but they're things we anticipate happening on a regular basis, you know, so replacing, like I said, the desktops. Um, I know last year, Rick, we started talking about, or planning for the copiers and the printers and that kind of thing. Um, so we really have those two plans, the, the really, the big stuff, and then the more um, smaller ticket items that, that we pull together from all departments um, for a six-year period.
Right.
And that's, um, the CNR plan itself is, is town. Um, the capital plan by charter, we, we do a combined um, town and Board of Education capital plan. See, that, that all shows up in one place. And then the, the CNR, the, the Board of Ed has their own and we have our own.
Before I jump over to Mansfield, does anyone have any questions for me on that, that run-through with uh, Enfield? And Bill, that's what you were looking for, right?
Yeah, that, that is really what I was looking for. And I'll, I'll save my comments until you go through the Mansfield one as well. Cause the comment is gonna be, so besides just making it more formal, is there some benefit to consolidating? And, and that's really the question, I guess, when we get all done with this.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so on, on the Mansfield piece, and I, a piece of that will be answered here, Bill, for you, is there. And you may have mentioned, they are a little bit of a smaller organization. Um, they're definitely bigger than us on the town side and they're definitely smaller than the district side. Um, but the piece I wanna pick up on is really the uh, the shared services unit, how it's described there on page three of that MOU. Um, if you looked at that, you could probably put in um, the IT manager for the town, the network administrator for the town, the IT director for the Board of Education, the network administrator for the Board of Education, and also there is a network supervisor in the school district. So if you took those five, you would put them right in that spot. And that shared services really are, those are the core of what we're sharing right now.
Yeah.
Um, so, and that's through collaboration, open discussion, through the steering committee, through emails. Um, and just by daily interaction. Uh, it's like no one's really trying to uh, you know, protect um, a chief, uh, you know, their tribe or anything like that. Um, matter of fact, just even today, or the last two weeks, but today it ended, is that on the piggyback from the library to the Board of Education CEN port, uh, we had a problem where our remote- our remote workers in the library could not work from home because of the configuration. It was pretty problematic. But pretty much those core people that I just mentioned, both on town and on the, on the district side, started banging away at it. And today we finally figured out that, you know, it was just something going on at a firewall that wouldn't allow that to happen. And we just flipped the switch and boom, it was done. But that was just persistence and open communication between those five core of, well, I'm going to call them shared services, because we do, they use us and we use them all the time for that kind of activity.
Right.
And then on that part B, for the shared services unit, network management and services, we pretty much use two different lay managers, if you will, and network support people. We kind of keep it in-house as much as we can. They have knowledge, we have knowledge. If it gets to a certain level, like a level four, a level five, we go out and there's one person that we go to and they do as well if needed. If not, they go to a different outside vendor and we keep it to an outside vendor as well. Jason and I had that discussion just recently, that, you know, for an overall coverage, you know, should we just, you know, unify that and put it all under one umbrella, who he uses right now? So that discussion's happening right now for network management. The telecommunications piece is a piece, in my opinion, that really sticks out. The town being really a service center for, you know, our residents and, and other people in the public, we've always stayed with the traditional, you know, PRI lines and an on-prem telephone solution to keep that. We've experimented, like as you knows, with hosted VoIP, some good, some bad. But I think, and this is something where Jason might be able to give us a little more feedback, if he's got some money coming up appropriated for his piece of the telecommunications. The fiber on page four, that was already pretty much discussed. And we share our fiber infrastructure with them. It goes back and forth. As long as he has extra strands and as long as I have extra strands, we, we just say, hey, I need this, I need that, and that'll happen. Again, that engineering piece comes from an outside vendor and the, the difference on the fiber maintenance is that he has an outstanding, I think he has a contract and agreement with his fiber guys, should something happen on the poles, where we follow a CROG contract with our vendor. And in their contract, it's stipulated, we just, you know, if something did happen, we'd call them up, we would be charged, you know, this amount for labor, parts, whatever it may be. So that's where that piece is covered on the fiber side. The hosting and maintenance of shared systems and databases, there's the financials that we talked about, which is a really good start for the town and for the board of education. But on the database side, I mean, we're, you know, they're more geared structured on the, on the student educational piece, curriculum piece. And on our side, our databases, which are driven to the cloud, is more on, you know, land indexing, records management, so on and so forth. So we're definitely different there. Overall, network health and security aspects, and that's the piece that's coming up for us, and I know Jason mentioned it as well, to get some appropriations to have our network checked out. He's gone, he's updated his switch, I believe, this year, and we had updated ours last year. So our switching equipment, our electronics is pretty much up to date on that. And that's it.
Did you get the flavor from the Mansfield one that they had a, what I'd call a small group that was the shared set of resources? And then they had a lot of things that were outside of that group that did not get shared?
Um, I believe there was. I'm just pulling up my notes right now, Bill. It was almost like in law enforcement, they don't really have law enforcement there. They have, I think they have state there.
Yep.
Yeah, that one was interesting because there was a shared services budget that each side would contribute to, but they had separate budgets for, they still had standalone budgets for other items.
Right.
Equipment, software, things like that.
Yep.
And then, right, like you said, the personnel themselves.
Right. So it kind of sounds like that's a hybrid of some kind between, you know, fully shared or fully consolidated to one that is of a hybrid nature. So some things were very clear, I thought, and that they would have that as, oh no, this is just board of ed, or this is just for the town. And then there were those shared things. And for the shared things, they seem to have a formula that as of 2018, they were using, which was 50% of the costs went to the town, the other 50% went to education, but even that was broken down for the regional district.
Yeah, so Bill, on, I took some notes and I put it under structural, personnel structure.
Yeah.
So they have, one, they have the CTO.
Right.
And then on the school side, they have a director, a sys admin and a office assistant. There are two network admins. There are three IT spec, no, four IT specialists split between town and school. Three technician, desktop technicians. One system librarian shared. One teacher integration, which is shared between elementary and high school. There's one AV person, and like I said, the police was split off. So they had, they had quite a few folks, really.
They really do. When you, when you consider when this thing was written, they had four people.
Yeah, and that just doesn't even include that he may mention that they had created a communication specialist, a new communication specialist within the last couple of months.
I'm getting the flavor that we're basically looking at IT-type services at this point? Were we looking earlier to have more broad-ranging ideas? You know, other, other things that the towns could share?
Yeah, well, finance is one area where we're looking to do that.
Well, I thought we were also looking at the possibility of other towns looking at sharing.
Oh.
Not necessarily with this IT stuff, but I thought we were initially had a look at other type of things that might be shareable.
I don't know, I mean, at this point, and I'd have to ponder that one. I mean, one thing that we, we've actually threw it around in one of our meetings some time ago, and it's always been something that I would love to do is where for a disaster recovery site, it's located in another town or city, you know, far outside of our town, right?
Yeah.
So those type of services, actually, it's, it's happened, it does happen. And pretty much that's really just an open discussion with another town. And as long as they're on the same infrastructure that we're on, CEN, that would be able, capable to do. I think the, the other thing that we talked about, I'm just digging into my brain here, Harold, is that even for soft, for softwares and hardware sharing and things like that, not so much the, the hardware itself, but contracts and things like that, that piece of it's really taken over by CROG, who does that piece of it. We all report to a CROG and, you know, that's really a shared service that we all use. Now, when I say that, every town uses that shared service.
Okay.
So Bill, to go back to your question, is really, you know, do we just formalize the things we're already doing or do we think about consolidating? And I think maybe it's a step one where we, you know, Rick went through all these things that we obviously are already doing. I think it's worthwhile to start there and to, you know, maybe put it down on paper and talk about, do we make this a little more, not official, because we're doing it, but, you know, documented and, and just starting there, I think.
Yeah, I think there's tremendous value from that. Not only can you show somebody else that, should it be needed, but it also provides you a guideline, something that you're going to do. I know for governance within the firm that I worked for, I would meet with all the business heads on a bi-weekly basis for one hour. So it was a lot of work for me to put together what I'll call a presentation, but it, you know, it was, it was a bi-directional presentation of not only if it was strategy we were talking about, or new risks, or an outage, or whatever it happened to be, we would speak every two weeks. And I usually had 12 to 20 people from the US, the UK and Canada. And it was always something to talk about. And there was no question in my mind, and here's where I'm getting back to something that formalizes it for yourself, that every two weeks I was having this meeting. And every two weeks I was putting this together. And every two weeks I was on top of the budget to make sure that I knew where everything was. And if it was project-oriented, that project status could be discussed, or I would bring in the project head to discuss the status. And what it meant for the business heads is that they couldn't say, I didn't know about this. They couldn't say, I didn't buy in. Or if they're going to say, I didn't buy in, it's at the strategy level, it's at the plan level. It's not after somebody's already gone down the path. And, you know, if it was a year later, we could have spent a lot of money and a lot of time buying the wrong whatever or implementing the wrong whatever, when we lost an opportunity with another business area. So this gave everybody an opportunity to, to be marching to the same drum. And I think if you formalize that, it, it tends to pay off.
Yeah, especially because what we were, what we learned from, a lot of what we learned other than what I mentioned about the leadership commitment, was really the efficiencies. It's not necessarily saving, you know, personnel costs or anything like that. It's really just saying, okay, we're going to buy something, but maybe you're buying the same thing and, you know, the economies of scale and all that kind of stuff. So if we do formalize, you know, the collaboration in some way, we're, we can capture that in the way that we already have, but, you know, even more so without formally, or without actually consolidating, at least at this stage in the game.
Right.
And maybe down the road, that's something, but not, you know, an immediate
Yep.
Need.
Good. So then the question would be, I think, where do we, where do we start doing that? And how does that play against the requirement that, or the request that we had gotten from your bosses, who said, you know, we want to take a look at what other towns are doing?
Yeah. Yeah, I, and I was thinking that as well, because, you know, what was our original charge? And it wasn't, you know, it was pretty simple. It was to look and to do some benchmarking, basically, to say, what, what are other towns doing? And I think we have a good amount of information from both the survey as well as the phone calls that we, I think, Bill, you summarized, I think, you know, we can summarize what we've learned. I mean, we have the information, we just, you know, if we want to pull it together in terms of the response to the initial charge that we had. And then I think if we take it one step further and say, you know, we also talked about, you know, the need to formalize what we already do and to get that down on paper too. So I don't know if we actually, you know, if that's something that maybe Rick and I work on with Jason. But at the very least, you know, presenting the benchmarking data and what we found.
That would be great. And I did take another look. I don't know if somebody's been working on it or if some magic happened, but on the Google Drive, under our project, the summary information now is presented in a very nice graphical form, even though, you know, I could make an issue that what people said might not have been what they meant. But the, the information as it's summarized there as part of the, the Google responses came out really nicely.
Yeah, so maybe for our full, our full task force meeting, it's in a week now, at the very least, I can download what, I think that was magic, I think that was Google just pulling it off.
Yeah, I thought it was great. It's like magic.
Yeah, so I can, I can at least extract that and then we can take a look at it and say, does this fulfill what we need? Do we want to add anything, especially based on the fact that we had those follow-up phone calls? And then talk about, you know, getting down, getting a more formal, you know, laying out some of the things that Rick went through in terms of what we already do.
I think that would be useful to have the, the summary of, of the survey stuff, but then take the next step in this and almost suggest, this is what's happening and we'd like to simply put it on paper so it's documented. And so it's a framework for if changes occur, you know, it's kind of a guideline of which way to aim things at.
Yeah. Yeah, because, you know, from what I've seen, and, and I can't, I can't say that we've done a detailed assessment here of what each town has done and, and how they feel about it and what we might learn from it. But at the level that we've gone through it, I didn't walk away with anything that said, oh my gosh, if we did this, this would be the answer for the town.
Right.
I agree.
And that's okay. I mean, I think it was worth the exercise, you know, even to learn.
Yeah.
Because I think we surveyed and spoke with enough communities to get an understanding of what.
Yeah, what they're doing and, and you can see where some of the challenges might be in doing it that way and what some of the benefits might be and where the similarities are to what we're doing. We may be approaching it slightly differently, but getting the same benefit. So, and, you know, I, I keep coming back to, I don't know how much of it is just luck that we have Jason and Rick in those positions and yourself in that position that would cause this to happen, but it seems to be happening. And not to say that we couldn't do better, and maybe that formalization will help us do better if there's an opportunity, but it's happening today.
And that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think Rick and Jason should get more credit for it because it's not, it's so behind the scenes that I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, that's probably true. And, and you can be assured that in, in many companies, this does not happen. This, this is, you know, everybody has a fiefdom and everybody operates out of that fiefdom and they don't, they don't want anybody looking over their shoulder.
And they count beans more than the town does.
Probably, yeah.
Does that make sense, Rick?
Yeah. No, I, I agree with that.
Is there anything else for our full meeting next week that I should pull other than that, the summary data from the survey? I mean, I can, I don't know if we want to like pull bullet points together in terms of what we learned just from talking to other towns, or if we can just, you know, or can I can just report out on that verbally?
Maybe if we had a list of the areas that we thought we would formalize? That might be something. And, and I'm not, I'm not saying create an extensive list. If it's a list of three that we can really tackle and get positioned as well as provide us some benefit, then that would be a great list.
Yeah, that's doable for sure. We can, Rick and I can talk and we can include that.
Right. And, you know, Jason may have something that, from the, the board side, that he's saying, boy, this is a gap for me. If we formalize this, then I can go back and tell people we're all set.
Right, yep.
Great, that's very helpful. Great, so we'll do that and then that way we can chat with the full group about it too, next week. too, next week. Anything else for today?
I have nothing more.
That's pretty.
Yeah, it's not for me.
Good. We're up on an hour too, we did really well.
We're getting good at this.
We got six minutes to spare.
We could cause a lot of trouble in six minutes.
Awesome. Okay, well, we'll see you all next Monday then, for our regular meeting.
Terrific. All right, stay safe, everybody.
Same to you, thank you.
Good evening, bye.